Good evening, Palm Bay. We're back at it again. We have another set of interviews, a set of interview, rather. Tonight I have in the house with me Mr. Mike Hammer. And some call him Hammer Mike. And I don't know any other nicknames that he goes by. What other nicknames do you go by, sir? Is that it?
Um, just Triple Threat because I'm a videographer.
Oh.
A videographer name.
Okay, okay, okay.
I like that shirt too.
Uh, thank you. Thank you. Welcome to the platform.
Thank you.
Platform, it's been a long evening for me. As you can see, jump off one life and here trying to monitor the city hall meeting. That's ongoing.
Yeah, it's pretty crazy.
Yeah, so. Mr. Hammer, before I get into it, um, I want you to introduce yourself to the audience. So I know who you are. I know little about about yourself. I know that you're a lifelong resident of Palm Bay. I know you're married with children and you're deeply involved in the community. So and I know you have experience in business and community management. And I know you advocate for smart progress and recover both taxations, strategic development, effective city management. Is there anything I left out?
I can go on for hours, bubba.
All right, so here you are. This is the floor for you to go ahead and introduce yourself to the platform.
So for those that don't know me, my name's uh, Mike Hammer. It's actually Richard Mike Hammer. Um, my family uh, was originally from here. And when I say they're originally from here, my great, great grandfather came here on horseback with a bunch of cows and was one of the founders of Melbourne, Palm Bay, um, O'Gally. A lot of what you see here today was, was all from my family coming here. I, I could take another hour to tell you how this, how this uh, city was formed and our, um, our plans in it. And my, you know, I have an aunt that was the first post mistress uh, for Palm Bay. I have a, um, like I said, you know, my grandfather was here. My grandmother worked for the city of Palm Bay for thirty years. My dad worked for the city of Palm Bay for thirty plus years. I worked for the city Palm Bay for fourteen plus years. And uh, while I was there, uh, you know, I just had to worry about my cows and, you know, grass and things like that. I didn't really care about politics at all. And, and I began to have a family and start to learn about different things in the community and, you know, learn about a little, a little bit about what's going on. I worked with a few people to bring new business here to Palm Bay. If you believe it or not, originally the Margaritaville that's in Melbourne was here originally. And we had Westgate here, we had a lot of things that were here. Almost a hundred, uh, a hundred plus million in new business came here in around twenty sixteen. At the time, we were bringing in twenty percent of all growth was business, which is, which is good for what you want for a city. Um, some things happened in the city of Palm Bay. Obviously, uh, everybody knows, you know, the, all the scandal and everything else. And that's when I started paying attention a lot to the politics of Palm Bay and what's being done and what's going wrong. Um, I then found a, a lot of things going wrong within even around my job, around the city and things I felt I could get in trouble for. So I went forward and I said, hey, these are things that I see that are going wrong and I don't want to be part of it. Well, they didn't change anything, so I let them know if you don't fix these things in three weeks. Um, I will leave and I will fix it from the outside. And so what I did was on, on January first of twenty twenty, I quit my job at the city. And it's been my goal since to uh, fight for Palm Bay. I took about four years to learn the, the politics behind it, what I can do, what I can't do. Um, I know how the city operates, so I know what's being done, what's not being done. But I didn't know the politics side, the things about learning about CDBG, learning about um, the integral lagoon, the thing, these steps that we have to take. These aren't things you can't just say, hey, I want to be a city council member one day. Because doing the wrong thing up there on the dais can land you in jail. We have sunshine laws. We have a lot of things that people don't understand that, you know, being a nice guy is not being a good council member. Being an educated person that can listen to the community and what the community needs.
Right.
What my family needs, what our family needs, that's being a good council member, not being nice.
Okay. All right, and um, I know the questions are coming in, not getting to them right now. The community is ready to roll. And so I need you a favor, community, I need your favor. Today I got some good news. I learned that you guys are actually going to YouTube and you are actually watching the videos. I got a report from YouTube that says that we had twenty thousand hours of watch time.
Wow.
That is amazing for this small little platform. That means the community is actually going back and watching these videos over and over again. And so I am very appreciative of that, but.
Well, I would like to add in there, I, I do hold a badge for your uh, program.
Okay, great.
One of your top, uh, one of your top provider badges, as well as you were the first person that I told I was running, if you remember.
Yes, sir, I remember when he contacted me and asked me for, for the, the skinny. He asked me for the low down.
Everything you do, Kevin.
Yes, so I, um, and I told you my thoughts on that. Um, so here we are, here we are. So thanks again, audience, for watching these videos, for what to, to, to taking part into the process. And um, you know, me doing this is no small feat because I, I work multiple jobs and I work from home and I have to sit down and research the candidates and come up with the questions. Um, so here we are. Mr. Hammer, currently I see that in your coffers, you have over fourteen thousand dollars in contributions. Congrats to you.
Yes, sir.
Um, how do you plan to go forward uh, in the closing days of uh, reaching out to the residents of Palm Bay?
I am, I am all over. Um, I tried some text messaging and, you know, that didn't work. Um, my best thing has been door knocking. I door knock almost every single day after I get off of work. Um, I have been to both of the Space Coast uh, straw poles that we've had. We had one at the Melbourne Auditorium where I won big there. Uh, we just had the Space Coast Hobnob that was uh, in Cocoa that um, had me and uh, Mike Jaffey at. And we both won big there. Um, other than that, uh, I'm on social media a lot. Uh, my door knockers have my phone number on it and I will tell you, I get ten to twelve phone calls daily just talking to people, hearing their, hearing their problems, hearing everything that they have to say. And um, I would say during the week, I see, I see fifty to sixty businesses a week that I just stop in, talk to them, talk to them about what's going on. And the difference about that is, is, is this isn't something I started doing since I've been running. I've been doing this since twenty twenty. I've been reaching out and talking to people, finding out what's going on in the computer or in the, in the community and helping out. I mean, every time it floods here in Palm Bay, um, I mean, I've even seen you share my posts. I'm out there pulling people out. This isn't something that, hey, I'm running for city council, now I'm gonna start doing stuff in the community. I've been working in the community since twenty sixteen. I've spent tens of thousands of dollars of my own money helping this community without even running for council.
Yeah.
This is, this is something that's just passionate for me and, you know, my win is, you know, when I do leave, I'm leaving a name for my kids. I'm leaving a name for this community. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave this place better than it was when I got here. And I was born here, so I got, I got a big uh, I got a big path to fill.
Got you. All right, audience, his message cannot get out if you don't help me out. Please hit the like button, hit the share button. And if you're on YouTube, hit, make sure you hit the like button because that will help the algorithm and make sure that you, the message gets out to the uh, community about Mr. Hammer. You want to help this message get out? I know many of your supporters are probably watching right now, Mr. Hammer. Wait, can you tell them to help increase the audience count right now?
I'll just share it, uh, tell all your friends, uh, you know? Give me a call, three two one eight two one eight 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 nine, that's my phone number.
Okay.
You ever want to talk about anything, I'm there. Um, I have a, I have a meet the candidates this week, actually Saturday, from one PM to five PM at the House Church.
You're gonna be able to relay that information later on too.
Oh, yeah. That's one of my ways that I'm getting it out now, but.
Yeah. Let's get into the meat of the questions, okay? Let's get into the meat of the questions. And as of you know, I don't know if you more than likely watched the meeting tonight, some parts of it. You know that Mr. Philip Weinberg was appointed to miss, to uh, fill that vacant seat, correct?
Yes.
Okay, what are your thoughts on that?
Um, I never agree with anybody getting appointed to a position when they're a donator to a campaign. Um, he has given donations to one of the people that, that actually appointed him. And I don't agree with that. Um, I do believe we did vote for that decision and that's something that we do need to back up. I don't agree with it. Um, I think it was uh, I think it was worded to where, to where it was picked incorrectly. Um, it is definitely something that, that should have been addressed. And um, I think it was purposely made that way for this, honestly.
Okay. Who would it be, who would have been your preferential choice for that seat?
Um, I think Bill Batten's awesome. I think he's, he's, he is overly, um, he is overly knowledgeable on everything that's going on. Um, other than that, I, I don't, I, I think Phil's extremely knowledgeable. I really do. I think he's a great guy, he knows his stuff, but there, with Palm Bay being what it is, you know, ethically, I think we should make the right decisions on that. And whether it's legal or not, it just doesn't look good. I mean, I mean, look at our last election, we had a, you know, you know, we had a developer get arrested for attempted bribery. And now, you know, we're appointing someone to a board that just donated to somebody. I, I, I just don't, I don't agree with it. I think we should uh, I think we should make better choices, stronger choices. And uh, I just don't think it's a good look.
All right. All right, let's talk about public safety and emergency response time. Um, we are aware that the city is growing and we know a lot of this questions tonight is going to be surrounding infrastructure and the growth of the city because that is our trouble right now, as you're aware. We are growing and we're growing, busting by the sin. As said to all the candidates I've interviewed, everybody know the issues, okay? We have a response time about eighteen minutes, unacceptable, right? Um, so, help me out here. During the recent council meeting, there was a discussion about the critical need for additional fire stations in the city and the expansion of police and fire services, okay? What specific plans would you do to address this critical need? Okay, we know that the mayor came back and say, well, he's gonna not go forward with the two mil, right? And so what were your thoughts, process on this? I mean, how would you address it if get on the diet?
The first thing is, we haven't addressed impact fees in twelve years. That's a lot of the reason why we're so far behind. The water has been overflowing out of the glass and now that it's filling up the room, we're gonna start to address it. This is something that should have been done. This is, this is, this has been handled, I guess you could say, misappropriated completely. Um, our priorities haven't changed in the last twelve years. We know what we should be doing and we're spending money on, on the things that we shouldn't be. There's a lot of things that, that are, are being put in there, a lot of things that are being spent on that shouldn't have been. Um, I know in twenty sixteen, when we started, we knew that this, that this issue was gonna happen. And if I remember correctly, they were requiring some of the developers to pay their impact fees upfront. So for instance, we have twenty eight hundred homes coming in down south. When those twenty eight hundred homes came in, they should have got those impact fees upfront and have the police and fire departments built before these communities started. These are things, these are things that should have been done way before now, way before now. This is, this is something being put in the lap of, of whoever's next. We're spending, you know, we're spending money on things that's, that's. I just got a hundred and uh, a hundred and eighty, eighty-nine page um, uh, booklet on, on the budget and what we're spending everything on. And the fact that these people are asking for raises after coming and asking us for money.
So Mike, is the, not to cut you off, so we can get to these meat of these questions.
Yeah.
Are you, are you saying that you believe the city is being mismanaged?
Oh, two hundred percent.
Okay, and then my follow-up question to that is, if you were to grade the city manager right now, what would be her grade?
I would give it an F.
Okay.
There is a, this is the fact that, that they're asking the city to make cuts before they have a budget or before they have a workshop, before they discuss making any kind of cuts at the city level. They're gonna come to the highest taxed residents in the county and ask us for more tax money. For the people that don't understand what a mil is, because people don't really know what a mil is. A mil is one dollar you pay for every one thousand dollars on, on your assessed tax value on your home. West Melbourne is one point nine nine and we're seven point one. That's crazy. We're paying seven point one in village for every one thousand dollars of our assessed tax and they're gonna ask us for more money. I can't, I can't give anybody a grade above, above an F for that. And I look at it this way, I, I love Suzanne as a person. She is one of the nicest people you could ever meet. I, I, I mean, I can't say anything bad about her as a person. But if I have a baseball team and I wanna, I wanna win, I'm gonna bring in somebody that is really good at baseball and not really nice. I mean, I love her to death and I really think that she needs um, stronger people around her. I don't know if it's her that's getting bad information or, or whatever, but if we're spending the money that we're spending on consultants and we're still giving our employee or our, our managers and our higher-ups raises like we are, I can't stand behind that.
Okay, I got you.
Especially knowing, especially knowing what we're supposed to be doing. I've been around, I've been around the city of Palm Bay since I was five. I know what people do, I've seen the projects and the buildings we've done. I've, I've been in the engineer's office when they built a lot of the projects that you and me see every single day. We did all that in-house. This is all in-house.
Yeah.
We're spending millions on stuff that we should be doing ourselves.
Okay. Audience, I'm gonna be coming to your questions soon, just bear with me. Let me get you some of my questions, okay? Um, let's talk about physical responsibility, okay? Because you, 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 you talked about us, I mean, you pretty much went that way without talking, saying the word physical responsibility.
Well, that's my thing, I do not shortcut anything and, and, you know, somebody's gotta step in there and make these changes and make these decisions and, you know, if something's not going the right way, we need to make a turn.
Okay, so here's my question for you. Do you think we need to do audit, we need to have an audit on the city finances right now?
Day one. We need an operational audit on, on not just the finances, on the operations of the city. And I think Kenny Johnson hit it on the head when he asked for it. And everybody looked at him funny, but that's, that, that's where we need to be at. If we're paying for consultants and all this stuff is wrong.
Yeah.
You know, you can't sit there and, you know, look at a cut, see it's bleeding and be like, okay, it's bleeding. We need to stop the bleeding and start the healing.
Right. So if you get on the dice, how would you implement it?
Day one, I would ask for an operational audit. That would be the first thing and, and, and we need to find out what went wrong. You know, I mean, as a council member, I can't do much. Is, is all I can do is make, you know, make a yes or a no. And I can assess, you know, assess what the city manager is doing.
Right.
And, and the fact that we need to be looking down and to her for these better operations, that's, that's, that's where it needs to start. If our operations can't function without consultants and everything else, we need to fix it. That's the only way it's gonna start is finding out what went wrong.
Sorry, I'm, uh, I have somebody monitoring this, the, the, the city council meeting for me. One of my admins is helping, you know? And so I'm, I'm multitasking right now because she sent me a message, so.
The hard part is, I'm gonna say the things that people don't want to say.
Yeah, all right, let's keep going. All right, so we know you, you're for the audit of the city financing. The city has maintained a maximum of a four percent in stabilization funds, okay? Given the ongoing proposed workforce expansions and pay increases, how do you plan to maintain or adjust the stabilization fund in the city to ensure financial health?
Well, a lot of the, a lot of the employees needed it. And I'm gonna give you an example, when I worked for the city of Palm Bay, I want to say that my take home on the day that I started was less or was more than the take home from the day that I left. We went fifteen, I would say fourteen to fifteen years without the raises that we, that, that I got when I was hired. We went twelve to thirteen years without the longevity they took away. We went, I'd say another twelve years without cost of living increases. A lot of the employees deserve those raises and, and I will stand by them on that. Um, on the other side is, the pay that management gets is, is insane. And, and I think that needs to be addressed uh, fully. Uh, we need to compare that with what the cities of our size are um, are getting. And we also need to reflect um, on the qualifications of these people. Because we have people that are not qualified, getting paid the max and.
Can I interject something? And I know Dale Davis doesn't like when I do this, but because I'm gonna talk for a second. Um, let me ask you this because my concern is this, that the city of our size, right? Um, we, and when we look at what's going on in Melbourne, um, Melbourne is really developing well. I mean, as far as I, I can see, that's my, that's my observation.
They have business.
And the, the business that's there and everything, why are we not doing that? Why are we not, you know, there? What, what are your thoughts on that?
We have, well, I would say, I would really like to know what our economic development and our growth management is doing to bring new business here. Um, I do know when I was with BCRA, we were, we were approaching investors and we were doing things to get new business here. And I don't see that here. Um, myself, I've reached out to, to BMX of USA, that's one of the things that I brought here. Um, and that's one of the things I've worked hard on. Um, this weekend I worked with uh, or I spoke with somebody from uh, YMCA and they're interested in having a second place in Brevard County and I'm pushing for it to be in Palm Bay. I don't think there's anybody trying to bring new business here. I think it's people just, just riding the ship as long as they can. I really don't. I don't think we have any kind of, any kind of programs to bring in good, strong business.
Okay, so we do have a group management director, is that in her for, for, I mean, is that something that she would do?
I know when Andy Anderson was here, it was something he did.
Yeah, okay. All right, uh, let's keep going. Actually, let me, let me take, because I know the audience are waiting patiently for me to post some of these questions. So let me try to take two of them before I continue with my line of questions. So Mr. Davis asks, how important is the finances of Palm Bay that the city council get a, put a moratorium in development until the infrastructure can catch up?
Well, the city shouldn't have to put a moratorium up. A moratorium is for people that can't control themselves. You know, we should be able to stand firm and say, hey, these are things that aren't good for our city. We, you shouldn't have to have a moratorium, it's for people that can't control themselves. I think uh, is it needed? I'm sure it's needed for some things, yes. But, but we really need to slow down a lot and let our infrastructure catch up for all this growth. Because this is, it's only gonna get worse before it gets better. And we just need smart people in there that are going to, to stand up for what Palm Bay needs, stands up for the voices of Palm Bay and stop doing things for how they feel or how their friends feel, how their donors feel.
All right, um, so Mr. Yance asks about. The discourse in our political climate. We, we have, you know, the catcalling, name-calling of any kind. That's happening on both sides when you go into the discussion rooms and the forums. I think that's what he's alluding to. Uh, on the, on Facebook and different social media platform. What are your thoughts on that? That should be happening and how would you bridge to the good divide? I mean, we know, for example, Palm Bay is um. Uh, what, what's the term for it? Is, is not Republican or Democrat race. It's, it's straight down the line, you know, you just vote for the individuals. So how would you unite the, the community?
Well, the first thing is, is we need to have smart people up there, because I'll tell you right now, I do not pertain in any of that crap. Um, me myself, I'm running against Donnie Felix and I talked to Donnie weekly. Um, Donnie actually appointed me to the, to the disaster relief committee. And um, we, you know, we had our meeting Monday, had a great, great meeting Monday. After every single council meeting, I'll, you know, I'll talk to Donnie about the things that he did and whatnot and uh. Uh, I, I can't sit here and tell you somebody on either side of the aisle that I can't talk to. It's, it's, we always have to work with these people. I might not agree with them, might not go to their house and have beers with them or go and do anything with them. But we have to respect each other. We have to respect everybody, whether, you know, you know, no matter what happens. And I think as soon as we start united, you know, actually being united, because we are this United States. Um, you know, we can actually make some progress and work together. Um, we do have to stand up for what's right and, and you know, sometimes people are not going to agree with each other. But, but.
Right.
There's no reason, you know, to not be adults. You can always be adults about things and, and you know. At the end of the day, you might not agree with somebody, but they're a father, they're a mother, they are a, I mean, a grandparent. And, and, and you should always respect people and, and you will never, ever, ever, ever hear me say something bad about somebody as a person. Cause, cause that's, that's them.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. I see your, your comment about the person. Yeah, this is a nonpartisan race, actually. Thank you. Um, so we, thank you for, for reminding me of that. I went blank for a second. All right, um.
I see Anthony Yance over here talking. I, I, I've uh, I've had some good discussions with him. He's a.
Right.
You know.
Okay.
He's on the other, uh, on the other spectrum for me, but I've always had a, had a, had a good relationship with him and it's somebody I can talk to and. You know, if something happens to somebody I can work with, you know, we always gotta, you know, we always gotta, always gotta be able to work together at the end of the day. Cause the only person that we're hurting at the end of the day is the residents, if we can't work together.
Yeah, and I need you guys to work together because like I was telling Mr. Kearns, I'm not planning to go anywhere. I'm, I'm staying put in Palm Bay. So we need to work together so we can all um build a safer and brighter community. So Mr. Winkins asks, speaking of an operational audit, the last audit of Palm Bay, I believe it was from J-Lab. Uh, ignored by the city leadership, can you explain what feed? You may, might be tried to put behind enforcing the lack of action on the audits?
I will have to, I will have to look back and see who dropped the ball on that at first. Um, I know a lot of the people that were here are not here anymore. Um, I would say. I would start my own audit anyways. Because if I remember correctly, it only picked out certain years. It did not go from X amount of years to current. It went for only a certain, I want to say four or five years, and it needed to be a lot longer. And I think at the end, that's what they came through and said, you know, this was, this was only for a certain year. And a lot of the things that they found um traveled over the, over the audit dates. So a lot of the things they found might have been addressed later on in the budget and in, in the, in the following fiscal year. Um, but that's the bad thing about uh picking and choosing what you want to audit. Um, if I remember correctly, there was a lot of picking and choosing in that and, and, and I didn't uh, I didn't really like the uh, the guidelines that went through it. But um, I do remember a lot of the things that were found, some gas that was missing. It was a, it was, it was pretty crazy and uh. Not a lot of people got uh, got in any trouble for it, which was, which was crazy and. Yeah, but back then I was just a guy that was working in uh, in public works and. You know, you know, kind of watching it on the side.
Okay, so Miss Hammer, I have some concerns and I know the community in a whole has some concerns in regards to um. The cost of housing in this area. Um, right now we have more dire concerns because some folks are may think that we add into a recession, which is not a story that we have to deal with at some point in time. But right now, um, what we're seeing is that the house crisis is ridiculous. The apartments to rent them is ridiculous. Um, what kind of guarantees or what can we do or what can you do if you get on the dais to, to help? Enforce something where to make sure that teachers, the, the firemen, the policemen who. Don't have that kind of income bracket to go buy that three hundred thousand dollar house or a four hundred thousand dollar house. Because that's pretty much what they're being priced at right now, to help ensure that they can actually get into a good home.
Yeah.
And live within the parameters of Palm Bay and its service. What would you do?
Well, I can go on for a while about that. Once you start bringing big, big, nice business here, strong business here. Um, you're going to start to see our taxes go down and you're going to start to be, be where people can afford things once we start bringing in jobs that actually pay high. Um, on the backside of that, the city actually does offer programs. I think the last council meeting, we discussed it with. Um, some people from Macedonia, I think. Um, and it's something that uh, Mr. Felix addressed that um, you know, he was, he was saying. The last one didn't get done. And it was over a year ago that we gave them land. I think it was, I think, I think we gave them land or properties. To um, to build a triplex that isn't done yet. And we just awarded them another one, but on the backside of that. They have one year to come up with this and here we are, working on it at the end of the year. And they had to, they had to approve it or the money would go away. It's like, why are we dealing with this one year later? This is, this is affordable housing for Palm Bay. This is, this is, this is what everybody's been asking for for the last. Eleven years is affordable housing and, and we have Macedonia here trying to do work and all their permits are getting denied. And they can't even build the first one they're working on and we just awarded them a second one. So. I think the city ranking needs to, needs a lot of help. And I think these are things we need to be working on a little better. Um, some better guidelines, some follow-through. Um, I know if I left a piece of paper on my desk and it went two, two weeks without being talked about, it was going away. Um, I also heard, uh, I also heard a lot of the staff gets to work from home and there's only certain days things can get approved. And I think a lot of that's what's making things go so slow. But I think once we get better permitting, better things. Um, at the city, our housing is going to start getting more affordable, because we're going to be making more money. Better businesses here, higher-paying jobs. And you know, on, on the bad thing is people don't realize if your permitting takes too long. That's money being lost by that person and the house is going to be worth, or it's going to cost more.
Okay.
The longer these jobs take, the longer they're getting paid, more expensive.
Yeah, let me ask you another question. In the last city council meeting, there was some discussions being had. And in the part of the discussion, I caught something that the city manager said that left me per, very perplexed. And I know a lot of folks caught on to it. She said that, well, it was a complaint by a resident, let me back up. That some houses were being left abandoned.
Hmm.
The contract, did you catch that discussion?
I did.
And um, they were literally just walking away and nobody, you know, nothing was being done by these vacant homes.
Hmm.
Uh, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, the complaint specifically wasn't really for the, it wasn't really for the house being, being empty. It was for the dumpster being left out front full of stuff and one was by the road and everything else. I actually, I actually reached out to, to um, the companies that this is happening with. And for instance, that one that she was talking about is a company called Eco that does the dumpsters here, here within the city of Palm Bay. Um, these housing developments, or not the housing developments, but the, but the home builder isn't paying for the dumpster. So that's why they're not getting picked up. So you go around the, so when you go around all these neighborhoods and you see these big green dumpsters that say Eco on them. It's because nobody's paying the bill for these people to pick up the dumpsters, so they're not picking them up.
Got you.
So that's what's going on with that.
Got you.
I'm not sure with, with what's falling through with these home builders to where they're not paying, you know, paying the people with the dumpsters. But that is something that needs to be addressed and I've talked to, to a few different people about it. And I've actually talked to, to a few others about actually coming. And just taking the dumpsters away and figuring out something to do with, with getting it paid for. Because right now, all the rain that goes into those dumpsters and all that trash and everything that's in those dumpsters. It all drains out into our swale and guess what? Everything runs a little good.
Yeah.
But I think everything's running to St. John's now because they turned that around, but yeah.
Very good. All right. Thank you, sir, for you, for um, helping with that. Um, let me go back to the questions. Let me see if there's any questions in here. A lot of questions from, from um, from. Mister Fire, Mister, Mister Weekend, Randy Winkens and um. Dale tonight, let's see, uh, let's see, great do it. I don't know what that's about. I saw, I saw another question from him. I was looking for it. Um, maybe I already posted that one. Um, oh no, Dale, Dalestead. Okay, pro question, why does a housing bubble hurt Palm Bay?
I would say the housing. I would say it would help and hurt. For one thing, a housing bubble would make our home values go down to where our taxes would be a little lower. But we would, we would be getting less money in tax revenue because we rely on the residents and not businesses. Uh, we need to be relying on the, on, on the businesses and the revenue the businesses bring in instead of relying on you and me to get these taxes paid. Um, there's countless ways that it can hurt and there's countless ways that it can help. But um, it will put the economy in check. Cause right now, these, these homes are out of control. These home prices are out of control. But that's what they're going for everywhere, so. They are building here because our impact fees haven't been addressed in twelve years and it's cheaper to build here.
All right, I'm going discussion right now. Uh, that's happening at the city hall. I'm not sure if it's over, but my admin helped me compose this question. Um, about an hour ago, the city council discussed potential updates to the land development code to ensure consistency with the recently adapted. Palm Bay twenty forty-five comprehensive plan. If elected, how would you approach land development regulations to ensure that they support both responsible growth and the needs of the community?
Comprehensive plan is key. Um, if I was, the part that I did and I was able to watch. I saw the, the city attorney that's there now was saying the, the new zoning laws are, are. Are not coinciding with the comprehensive plan. I wouldn't pass it. I wouldn't allow it to do anything. Our comprehensive plan is key. We need to stick to that comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan. That's why it's made. It's made to assure not only the people that are moving here, that our community is going to stay that way. But it also lets these businesses know, hey, when you move here. And you make a business here, we're sticking to a plan. This is our plan. This is our promise. The comprehensive plan is a promise. To let everybody know the community is going to stay here. That's why the people come here. So what's the use of having a comprehensive plan and having these people come in? And, and then the next thing they know, they have a Dollar General next to their house. Next thing they know, there's a car wash, you know, on the corner. Of a residential neighborhood. It's, it's, I don't believe in it. I don't believe. I, I don't believe it should even be addressed right now. They have three people on council and then they have one temporary person. This is something that needs to be discussed by all five and they need to have a workshop on it. I am, I am so over seeing, seeing these, seeing these decisions made in fifteen to twenty minutes that affect. That it, it affects the lives of a hundred and forty thousand people. You know, we're making regulations. That control people's houses, what they can have in their backyard. You know, taking away sheds and everything else. And then they're moving storage units in because they just made a regulation on sheds.
Right.
All these, all this thing needs to be, all this needs to be audited. All of it. It, it all needs to be audited. And the fact that, that it, all, all these donations are coming in from developers and everything else and now we're. And now we're trying to change zoning. I, I, it just don't pass the test. It don't pass the test with me. I don't agree with it. I don't think it should be addressed. I think it should be addressed in a workshop. And I think it needs to be addressed by five people up there on council that, that actually know what's going on with it. Did you know that, that this uh, that these new zoning um. These new zoning guidelines are fifteen hundred pages?
Hmm. Meeting, they did say that, hey, listen, this is going to be a long meeting because we have a lot of pages to go through. And when I heard that, I was, my eyes, my ears were like, whoa, really? So I mean.
They're not going through all fifteen hundred pages. Nobody on, on council or the board. Had time to read fifteen hundred pages and understand. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I think there was a, um, there was.
It don't pass the smell test with me.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's a discussion of them possibly coming back a second round after the community get a. Um, get their eyes on this and be able to, be able to opine appropriately. Uh, so there should be another meeting coming up aft- afterwards. Hopefully, I don't know what's going to come of this meeting. Maybe they take a recommendation of a workshop. Uh, we'll see. Um, when I get offline, I'm going to see if it's finished and I'm going to continue to watch that and. Watch, uh, re-watch it and that kind of thing. However, let me ask you this, because you brought up a lot of things in your response to that question. Do you think that we need a moratorium on not just homes and apartment buildings and that kind of thing, but or. For example, commercial-based businesses like the car washes, the Dollar Generals, the um, that kind of thing. Do we need a?
If we don't get people in council with common sense, yes, we need a moratorium. And staff. If we get a better staff with, with experience and, and, and a complete overhaul of the city. Or, or of the city management, I, I, I would, I, I would approve them. I would, I would say yes on a moratorium.
Yes, on a moratorium.
Cause right now we don't, we, we have no control over it. I mean, I mean, they've had one week to, uh, to read a fifteen hundred page. Zoning guideline and, and they're already making a ruling on it. Uh, yeah. That's, that's exactly why they make a moratorium. It's for people, people that. They can't control it. It's just being pushed down them.
Yeah, yeah.
And you can't count on staff to always give you, give you, you know. What's going on. You can't count on anything.
I know.
And make your, make your judge, you know, you know, make your judgment on it.
Right. I know Kenny Johnson proposed it, but then he withdrew the, the, the motion. I'm not sure why.
I know why. You want to know why?
What's that?
Because he didn't have the votes to get it passed. And if he got a no, you can't bring it back up for another year. Because Randy Foster was out that night and I think Randy Foster would have given him a yes.
Right.
And that's probably why the uh, why the um, why the operational audit didn't go through, because Randy wasn't there that night.
Right. Uh, Danielle, you said special meeting for that on the twenty-second. What are you referring to? Is there going to be another meeting on the twenty-second? Do you know about that, Mike?
She's probably giving an update on something that happened in council tonight. I know they are having a meeting on the twenty-second, whether it's going to be for that or not. I don't know.
Right.
Oh, for the fourteen hundred pages?
The fourteen hundred pages you said. Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
All right, okay, got you.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you, Danielle, for that. Um, uh, here's another question, Mr. Winkens. How do you feel about the new cameras in the school zones? Stupid question, but I'm curious.
I don't believe in cameras. I don't believe in um, any kind of, of, of surveillance of citizens at all. I mean, I get it if you're on, on, on private property. I get it if you are um, inside the school and everything else, but the whole driving. um, inside the school and everything else, but the whole driving down the road, I, I, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with surveillance of the system, or not the system, surveillance of the citizens. And um, I do believe we should enhance tickets there. I think it's extremely important to even pay more attention to, to, to what happens in school zones. I mean, I played football with a kid named Jarrett Blast that got, that got killed in a school zone just walking home. I know, I, I, I mean, and that was as a kid. Um, this is something that's been happening for a long time. I, I don't think the cameras are gonna help anything other than, other than being able to send some people some tickets and people are gonna say it wasn't me driving. I mean, I think it's gonna be, um, I don't think it's gonna fix the problem.
Got you.
And I don't agree with surveillance. That's, that's just, I mean, I get it. I get having surveillance on your, on your home, on the, on the municipality buildings, on the schools. I, I two hundred percent believe on, on surveillance of schools. But on the roads and everything else, I, I, um, I don't think it's constitutional either.
Right. I mean, we used to have the uh, red light cameras at one time, right? And then those disappeared.
Yeah, they took that away because they're not constitutional.
Yeah, those disappeared. All right, sir, we're doing good. We're doing good. Um, and uh, we're getting close to the end. We have four minutes to nine and I do have some other stuff to do before I can go to bed tonight, so. I thank you for being here, sir. I thank you for your, um, your responses to my question and to the audience's questions as well. I wish I had more time with you. I wish, I wish I had more time with you, but um.
Just let me know, I'll come back in one day.
Yeah, I thank you again for answering the questions and I wish you luck, best, uh, which is doing your campaign, the rest of your campaign. And um, I wanna give you your closing toss, your ability to tell the audience how to reach out to you, how they support you. What website, what telephone number, where, whatever they can call. Uh, this is your time to shine. Let them know why they should vote for you for C two.
Okay, well, um, I will say because I actually care. I'm, I'm extremely versed. I'm extremely knowledgeable on, on how the operations work. I've been around it a long time. I've worked really hard on this. Um, there's a reason why I didn't run for city council and as soon as I quit. It's, it's because I know that you have to learn things. You can't just jump into this. You can't just, just, just think, you know, I'm new and, and, and I can make a decision. I, I, I'm knowledgeable in the things that I say. Um, and I don't think anybody works harder than me. Um, on the backside of that, you can reach me at three two one eight two one eight 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 nine. Text me. Call me. You wanna have a discussion about anything. That's where I'm at. You can actually email me too. It's hammer the corruption twenty twenty-four at gmail dot com. And other than that, just keep on following Kevin. I mean, I mean, this guy, this guy don't miss. You've been great, Kevin, and uh, I really appreciate everything you bring to the community and, and, and I will tell you what, the education that you bring to the community compared to before you were here, it's, it's night and day. And I think, uh, I think several people like you and, and especially you is what's gonna change this community. The fact that I can sit here on video and tell people my story and how, how things, you know, how, how I believe I can help things. We never had that back in, even in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. I think you came around in the twenty twenty election or twenty eighteen, right?
Twenty twenty, sir. Uh, during COVID, I saw a need and I just basically said, let me fill this gap because nobody had a, I mean, we were all at home, you know? We were told.
Game changer, buddy, and, and, and and that transparency, when they, you know, when they ask me about, you know, about transparency and what can be done at the city, it, it's, it's people like you getting, getting the voices of the people that wanna make a change out there. And whether I get elected or not, I'm not the person that's gonna be like, hey, vote for me and I'll do this. It's vote for me because I'm, I've been doing this. And whether you vote for me or not, I'm still gonna do this. You're not gonna get rid of me. Um, I'm already gonna bring a YMCA here if, if, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, you know, I, I do, I do have that question about that. Um, and uh, I didn't get to pose it, but I'm gonna pose it because I know you did a closing remark, but let me ask you this. Young people, my, my, uh, my concern is I think we have some, some situ- situation. I don't remember it in depth during the summer with some units and um, doing some things that wasn't right. And I know there was some discussions and I know Kenny brought something to the forefront about trying to implement a, a program. I don't remember what it was. But um, what do you, or do you think you can bring to the table? I, I've, and as far as that is concerned, what do you think you can do for the young people?
Well, I've been a football coach for West Melbourne Football for twenty-two years. I have been from flag all the way up to seniors probably two or three times. Not only that, I'm, I'm the head football coach for Pineapple Cove. So I, I, I don't just have my two kids. I have, uh, I have hundreds. And I, I have, I have so much love for every single one of those kids that goes through my program. And I think we should offer that for more. We don't have a power league anymore. And um, I worked, uh, I did a lot of work in the Haitian community. And um, I worked with a kid named James Paul, who's one of my best friends in the world. And um, he said, I would say one of the best things in his growing up was playing powerball. And we don't have that. And, and we need to bring that back. We need, um, I've been discussing, I, I, I actually talked to the executive director for YMCA today. And he said, they wanna put a second YMCA in Bovard County. And I told him, I am gonna bust my butt to get one here in Palm Bay. Cause I think that's one of our biggest things. You know, we can't count on the schools to discipline our kids. We have to be able to send disciplined kids to our schools so they can start learning about school again.
Right.
I mean, the fact that there's lockdowns in Southwest and all other things, we need to be doing a lot more for our community. Or our kids. I mean, I love the youth sports programs, but it's two hundred dollars a kid. Then you're going three days a week. After, after school, it gets expensive. It's hard. This is all volunteer stuff for us.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um.
It gets expensive over time.
Anything kids, anything for the kids. That's why I brought the BMX track that, on, on the BMX track has, has a little pump track for, for even, you know, three, four year olds, um, you know, to run BMX bikes. This is, this is, this is just a, I mean, it's, it's just a start. And I think people are starting to realize the potential Palm Bay has. I mean, I mean, we're only forty-five percent built out. It's an open book for us to make Palm Bay what we want it to be.
Yep.
Right now, you know, how these, how these, how these businesses, they bring their businesses in is they put a dot down and they make a circle. And they say, how many people are within that circle? We've made that for them. We have all the potential in the world to bring these people in here. We just need to get our information and who we are out to these people. And I'll tell you what, I don't think anybody's gonna work any harder for it than me. Cause you know, like I said, I've, I've, I've spent tens of thousands of dollars in, in my own money. I've never taken a dime from anybody I've worked for in Palm Bay, just trying to build this up. I made a business. I spent my own money on it to help Palm Bay and that's what I'm going to do. You know, with or without the votes, I'm gonna do it.
Another thing I failed to say, and I did have it on my notes, I wanna thank you and I know the residents, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
For helping the community when it comes to flooding in the area.
Yeah.
I know, I see often when, once the flood arrives.
I'm always.
You, you are all over social media saying, hey, listen, anybody wants help? I'm ready to bail you out kind of a thing. So thank you for that. Um, for actually assisting the residents where that is concerned and we have.
Last one, I did seventeen vehicles I pulled out.
Right.
I was out there for almost nineteen hours.
Great, great. So do you think the city has made a little, the interview was finished about ten minutes ago, but we. I told you, yeah, I, we can go for hours talking to you.
Hey, I'm there.
The city, do you think the city has made a lot of improvements where, where the flooding is concerned right now?
No, not at all.
Not at all.
And there's a reason, um, the guy that's been in charge of that, his name's Frank Watanabe and he's no longer with the city of Palm Bay. Um, but we have to start with, with Palm Bay needs to realize how Palm Bay was actually made. Um, when they say there's always water in my swale. And this is something that brings me as a person to city council as, as, as why you should be there. Is the knowledge of how Palm Bay was made and why it is like it is. Palm Bay is actually made to where the cit- or to where the swales are supposed to hold water. They're not made to flow water. So when people say, oh, there's water in my swale, there's supposed to be water in our swales. It's, it's, it's a water retention system. So Palm Bay never had city water, city sewer when they first made it. It was made to where you had to rely on the water seeping down to the septic or not to the septic, but to the aquifer for our water sources to drink. So they made our drainage to where your, your swale holds water, then seeps down to the aquifer, then you have water to drink. So when people say, oh, there's water, it's supposed to hold water for up to seventy-two hours. And I wanna say it's over twelve inches, it's supposed to flow out. But one of the things when I go out there and I pull these people out, I go and I find out what the root causes are. And you know, the last time our root cause was, was I think the Saint John's, where it runs out to Saint John's, it wasn't allowing enough water out. Because how you assess it is if you have waters in your swale and it's not moving, you go and you check Melbourne Tillman. And if Melbourne Tillman is not full, then we know our swale is the problem. So when we went out, or when I went out, I assessed Melbourne Tillman when I went out. And guess what? Melbourne Tillman was full and flowing. So what we need to do is, is pre-storm, have a better situation with Melbourne Tillman and actually with Saint John's Water Management and get that better. We actually, and one of the guys that knows where our water goes, like way better than me, probably, um, he can tell you where a raindrop will land. Um, his name's Mike McCabe. He works for Melbourne Tillman. He's, he, he's, he's probably one of the most knowledgeable engineers about our swale system that I've ever met. Um, we need to have a better relationship with him. He actually used to be a city employee. Um, he used to be our city engineer, but uh, we need to have a better relationship with him. And we need to uh, work a little bit better with uh, with getting our water out of here. One of my suggestions was actually uh, if we team up with Saint John's uh, management, because they actually have a lot of, a lot of uh, property out in the compound as well. Um, if one of our issues is water, if we build a deep water lake out there, so when we do start to flood, we have a runoff for a deep water lake. Um, you can actually make it a reservoir. You can make it a- anything that you possibly want to. Um, I'm sure you can get grants for it. I'm sure there's a lot of things that you can get to help on that, so. Um, also, I was told a lot of the new, uh, a lot of the new pipes that have been put in were set about a foot low. Um, and, and it's, it's been addressed, but the guy that was doing that's no longer with the city. Sorry, I know a lot about the city.
Yes. Yeah, I, I need to have a conversation with you one of these days when I am less free.
Well, let's, you know, let's go grab some lunch, buddy.
Yeah, when I'm, yeah, I, I.
Yeah, you wanna catch some lunch? You'll catch me at Skibo's. That's, that's, that's my place over on Palm Bay Road.
Okay, got you, got you. As long as you're paying. I'm kidding.
Hey, I got you, buddy.
All right, um, well, it's been a fun ride. We, we, we had a good night and I think the, the community appreciates your answers and I think the community appreciate um, your response, yeah, your responses to these questions, so.
Yes, sir.
Really, I know you, if you really wanna do, do me a favor, I want you to go to YouTube, right? And I want you to subscribe because uh, my goal is to get to one thousand, um, one thousand um, subscribers soon because right now, as you're probably aware or not aware, I do not get paid for these services. And the only way I can possibly get there is possibly to have YouTube start sending me some kind of a check when you guys watch these videos, especially after learning today that I had twenty thousand hours of watch time during the month of July. That is amazing for this little platform. That means the.
Well, do you wanna hear a secret?
What's that?
I have thirty-six thousand uh, subscribers on my YouTube.
Awesome.
So after we're done and we go to lunch, I'll, I'll, I'll help you out.
Yeah.
So I have my music video business and I, I, I have a marketing to where I get subscribers. I can help you out, buddy.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, so community, go to the, that, that website, that, that link I showed you on the screen and hit the subscribe button. Help me reach that goal. Thousand subscribers at least, that's where I wanna get to because I do have the watch hours. People are watching the videos.
Oh, yeah.
And um, so that, that tells me that you have an educated community that's gonna go into the polls on August twentieth. And uh, by the way, just so you know, if you're not aware, uh, this Saturday, the polls open for early voting. So.
August twentieth is the, is the primary and we have.
Early voting, that's.
Voting on tenth starts.
Right, so.
And you can vote at Tony Rosa, at Ted Whitlock and at the Field of Dreams uh, in West Melbourne. And that's all for Palm Bay, early voting.
So if you didn't vote by mail, here's your option. There you go, the options right there. He just told you where you can go to ensure that you get out there and vote. And vote your conscience. Whatever your conscience lead you to vote, vote. Make sure you vote, you, because every vote counts. And I'm glad that I'm a service to you and you're able to make that educated decision on who to vote for. So please, thank you so much for joining me tonight and uh, you know, reviewing these two candidates. My last two interviews will be next week, Tuesday. Next week, Tuesday, starting at seven PM Eastern Time. So those are, that's will be my last set of interviews for this political season, for, for this particular uh, time. Um, so if you can join me then, it'll be appreciated. Uh, so join me then next week. I'll be interviewing a mayor candidate and another person who's also running for C two. Um, I think his name is Patrick McNeely. Um, so join me next week, Tuesday, starting at seven PM Eastern when I'll have my final set of interviews. And let's do those with a bang. So I, at least a hundred people watching me, right? Next week, Tuesday? Come on, I know you can do it, Palm Bay. Anyways, have a good night. I have a lot of grading to do. I'm a, I am a teacher at a college and so now I have to go grade papers.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, have a good night, folks. Talk to you soon and uh, we'll see you next week. Thank you, Mike, for being here.
Thank you.